Sponsored by John Chatchis Insurance, your local farmer's insurance agent located at 800 Avenue G in Ely. And brought to you as a public service by Ely TV, Channel 3-2 in Ely, Nevada. White Pine County Commission Building Subcommittee Meeting, April 16th, 2013.
Oh yeah, okay.
Okay.
Can you follow that too?
I think this means we're recording, so we're on record, right? That you're recording, it's got the little flash that you've got there? Okay. So all meetings are ordered, and first thing, public comments, is there any public comment today? Okay.
There is.
Oh, did I not see you? I'm sorry.
That's alright. I want to know if you guys are going to make that offer, or are contemplating making an offer on the old town property that caught on fire? I'd like to see you guys follow through. That way you could start construction and still have this building intact. I want to see as many offices stay in one central location as possible, and I'm not alone. If you've talked to the business community, if you've talked to everybody else in the community. The old timers had a good plan. When you went to do business with the county, you went to one location, and you didn't have to go that far. Now you've got to go three to five miles out for some offices out on the highway. Now another mile down the road for other offices at the old Ely Times Building. You've taken a $400,000 building off the tax rolls. I'm not happy with that, folks, at all. At the last meeting that we had at the convention center, there was quite a few complaints in regards to the offices being cold, ice inside the windows. How come none of that was taken care of under maintenance? I've seen the county give out raises $12,000 and $15,000, and yet we can't take care of our people? If things are that bad, why aren't we paying attention? There was also some talk about redevelopment along 11th Street. I don't think it's the county's business to redevelop any particular area. You want to encourage growth, fine, don't go down there buying a building and taking it off the tax rolls. What are you going to do with that business now? That's all I have at this time.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Okay. Next thing is discussion fellow to the town hall meeting. Let's say thank you first of all to everybody who participated and helped out, EDC and the community, and people from my office and Building Committee, and getting things together and making that movement happen. So if I miss anybody, apologize, but thank you for everybody who pulled that together.
And thank you, Elizabeth, for your huge effort in pulling it together.
She gets paid.
Yeah. The notes from the meeting are up on the walls here, and so I thought we'd just kind of run through. It seems like there was issues around the annex was one of the themes, issues around...
Can I, before we get into that specifically, I heard some comments in regards to our flyer that went out, that it probably should have had just a little bit more information on it. A lot of, I was told that a lot of people didn't fully understand, that they felt more like we were just going to tell them what we're doing, rather than ask for their input. So I think that we should have made that maybe a little bit more inviting, at least that's some of the feedback that I've gotten.
Okay.
So, and then other than that, I would have liked to have, for the next one, have our departments be able to face the audience, that they can also gauge and, you know, see them, and have the community see our departments' hits. And I was remiss, I should have had every one of you guys that were there stand up, and we should have been introduced, and for that, I do apologize. So it's always good to know who's, I mean, I know that a lot of the community does, and I know that, I think that it would have been good to do that. Okay, so, any other general comments?
We did have several people come up to me and provide positive feedback, as far as, you know, the meeting provided a lot of information. We would appreciate that and kind of clarify where things were going at.
Yeah, I, me too. And if I, we could ask, you know, individuals here, if you've gotten any kind of feedback, response from, you know, the community, aside from what we've heard, and I see a bunch of...
Basically, basically the same thing, they appreciated the fact that we admitted the truth, and studied rumors out on the street, which were just rumors. After they came there, they thought they had a whole new perspective of what the county was doing versus what they'd heard on the street. They were totally against it on the street, but that wasn't the facts.
That was, that's what I received.
I was approached and was told I went, who worked for the county for over 30 years, so they were glad to see that the county's finally moving forward. The only negative I heard was they are worried about the pool, and the cost of the pool in the long run, and what they're spending and what it's going to cost. That was the only negative.
Okay. Then let's go ahead and just take, just kind of run an overview of these items. The first one was the annex seemed to be a common theme that came about the annex, concern about demolition for the annex, and finding federal funds for demolitions. And this was something I planned on checking with EDC, to see if they had any ideas on grant monies for demolishing the annex. I'm not sure what that would be about. Anybody regular that you know they might need?
There's nothing that I'm aware of, or you ever heard anything on Paulson Bruce? No, and I thought her comment, like, I recall her saying...
Please say go over.
I thought she was a little concerned about not, that we not use federal funds, was the gist I got out of it. Was that what everybody else got?
No, no, I just, just what I got from it is she was more concerned that if we could get federal funds to restore and keep the building. She thinks it's a historical building, which it isn't, it's not on the historical register, we've got it on there.
Yeah. Historical...
Well, there are those things, yeah, and from what I understand, there's been so much that's been done on the inside that it was followed by...
I think, I think the only thing that was really original was that stairway. The railing and the stairs, I think everything else has had a meaningful risk at some point.
Okay, so you're not so sure that this building is not on the...
It's not on the registered list.
That's why we couldn't get the grants, to upgrade the...
It wasn't on the registered list.
Which, I, I was pretty sure that it wasn't, but I wasn't 100% sure, so I didn't respond, I didn't respond that because I didn't know 100%, but I didn't think so.
And then they were talking about archaeological studies related to this?
Now wouldn't that be after it's tore down? After it's tore down, stick up some bones underneath, when they're, when they're, they stop to put a facility in.
You know, there's, there's a couple of things in regards to that, too, that if there's anything that we can utilize in, in anything else, I know that, you know, like with some of the doors, if we're not going to sell them, that we keep them in, if there's a way, I know that retrofitting is very expensive, like this, this door here is, is not your standard door. You know, but those that are, you know, maybe we can reuse them in, in the building when we, we come in to replace this one. And just, you know, still do it. I think that'd be cool, and then we could put a little signage on it, or, you know.
We know there's a lot of things within the building that maintenance, we definitely want to pull out all our best locking systems and, you know, the newer fixtures, because actually, some of these fixtures are, some of them are new that we'll take, and some of that. There is some items in here, some steel doors on both ends, fire prevention doors, we'll take those, things like that. So I'm sure there's going to be some people out here that want something out of here.
Well, that was, to me, that was the goal when I first brought it up, is, is, you know, somebody has had family that was born here, and I think that, you know, it has a piece of history to be...
I'm writing it, I'm going to stay long.
What she's through with you all nickel.
Okay, I think, I think another thing, anything else on the annex?
I guess, you know, so far as archaeology, so I have no idea if there's somebody, you know, that when it is demolished, if there's...
Why would we want to do an archaeology study? I mean, I mean, if this building's been here for over 100 years, that there probably wouldn't be anything underneath it to where...
It makes sense, isn't it?
Yes.
Who's headed?
Our goals are those. But he can go with us to our new building.
We'll take him in a little girl.
He hasn't signed in.
So, 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 I, this is news to me.
Oh, really?
Are you going to...
Our building is so haunted.
I'm not getting the feeling that if we need to go ahead and do, if we're going to be rebuilt, I'm sorry, if we're going to rebuild on this site, that we would need to do any type of archaeological study, because we're just going to reuse the same property for the same purpose, putting another building on it for a county use, so, and I'm not sure that we need to go there and open up that kind of cost unless, unless, that's the reason why we need to do that. Okay, another thing that was a common theme was the Aquatic Center. And it seems like there's a lot of concern regarding operating costs and operating hours and all that type of thing. I don't know that this committee has necessarily ever addressed the Aquatic Center, but maybe we might want to just bring that forward to the county commission, as some of the need, like more information on, maybe a press release or something that outlines kind of the concerns and how we're addressing them, or put a budget out there, or, you know.
Something a little bit more concrete.
Yeah, because there seems to be a lot...
And let them know how much money is really, is being generated by the tax. And some of the stuff that we've worked with, you know, we really can't go off of what other pools are doing, because some of this is going to be unique to us, and we're going to have, I know that there's going to be a learning curve, where we're going to have to test what, how many days, how many hours, you know, some of that's going to come into play. Rotating lifeguards and having, they were very concerned about having a director? Director. You know, somebody in charge is going to be in charge, and so, but rotating, rotating that from, from the McGill pool, you know, keeping that flow. You know, I think that that's what some of the conversations have been in the past, was doing that.
And one of the things where he talked about closing in the middle of the day, and I did hear from some of the adults is, that's when they would want to go, is when the kids are out there.
Exactly.
So they said, you're going to close it and keep us out of it.
Well, and that was, that was part of it, too, how are we going to use it if the school's going to use it? So there's, there's a lot that we're going to have to really sit down, and, you know, because where it's an enclosed facility, so far as being able to be used year-round, we don't know, like where the, that one multipurpose room, I guess you would call it, where we can have birthday parties, pool party type stuff, we don't know, we haven't really come up with a figure for that. You know, so we don't know what's going to be coming in so far as revenue, I mean, so we do need to kind of look at, we do need to sit down and, and look at that.
One, I think what would be very good is if somebody put together a business plan.
Absolutely.
And showing everything, the costs come in and the costs go out.
Someone, huh? Okay.
Built it.
But that's actually, that's actually a really good idea, presenting it to the public as a business plan.
Yes.
Because it is supposed to be, it's not supposed to be a for-profit, but it's supposed to be sustainable.
Right.
And I think what Laura's points, what for me is well-taken, we'll just look at the cash register tapes after six months, and we'll see when our P towers, when the adults are coming.
I mean, there's going to be the learning curve with it.
Yeah.
Another thing that we need to look at, too, is, is what the, that came out of some of that, too. And I thought that last year we had had like family passes and summer passes type thing, and some of the people weren't aware of that. So pursuing that idea, so various passes, family passes or whatever, and, you know, is that, you know, we just, we need to look at, is that going to be for McGill, is it going to include McGill Pool, is it going to, you know, all of that?
Okay.
And then what those costs might be.
And as far as the building committee, how, what's the entrance and exit going to be out there? I didn't see. I know they talked about bringing the street in from the highway, but DOT didn't like that.
Maybe go get it.
Right, but I, I heard Senator Dopechiam on the last phone call made the comment that he had had a discussion with the director, Lee, I think it, so far as Endot, and that it looked like we might be okay so far as the Bobcat Drive, without having to go through the hoops and, you know, because they felt like that was kind of an overkill, and that, and it didn't really address the need so far as what school was getting out, and, you know, the kids were coming in and stuff, but it's trying to divert that. It's, was my understanding that what was originally planned is what, that it's not going to have to go to what Endot was trying to make us do, and I can't remember the exact, I apologize.
Right, then we're going to, then we're going to try and make everybody come in enough of Bobcat Drive, and if we put the extra that came from the highway through to the high school, then we would need to have like the turn lanes and everything there.
Lighting.
And...
Lighting.
Lighting, and now they're saying, no, we probably don't need to do that, so that we can probably pull, put that building in, or that row in as it was originally designed, so, I think we should put it there. Let's see, do we have a one that has the alternate line?
You feel sorry for that one?
This is the one, yeah. Okay, so this is when they're saying, just hide them, you find, that we can build this through. He thought that it would be, we would, we could do something like this with just that, and then coming through later, without needing to put in the lighting and the, the turn lane and everything, and the crosswalk and everything, that we could just go ahead and do this and still put this access road through.
Come in off of Highway 6 by the skate park.
Yes.
And the argument was, is the existing, the existing walkway goes down on this side of the road anyway, so why are we taking the time and the effort to put in a signal for a crosswalk and stuff if the walk is already... Personally, for my safety, we have high school kids that get hit by cars crossing the highway one hundred dollars' less time.
Yeah.
And now we're going to have...
Little kids.
Yeah, little kids, you hate to say it, a lot of people, that's going to be their babysitter for the summer.
Absolutely, it's not...
And they're going to, they're going to send their kids walking and riding the bikes, and, and you're going to have young kids crossing that highway.
I agree. Yeah, I, I almost think it'd be kind of nice, you know, that's like an over, but I know that's really pricey, but that way the kids could go up and walk over the highway.
I agree.
They're going to drop stuff on the car to go by, so.
England.
You have to take the good with the bad.
Sam, I think you're still in touch with your inner child.
Those duties.
Is there going to be an age limit?
See, we know you did it.
Actually, there is, okay, absolutely, there will be.
Yeah.
So they should be at least a certain age, and...
But I can see third graders, I mean, I can totally see that age group of kids.
Sure, you got nine, 10-year-olds that have... Yeah. Cause, I mean, your pool, I think, they'll drop off six-year-olds, eight-year-olds, the whole day. So I kind, I kind of agree, it would be nice, but we don't have a sidewalk on either side, so where we end crossing the road to, you know, it's not...
See, right now, they, the high school kids just start right there about the credit union, and they cross anywhere from there down to the intersection.
And the safety plan says the high school, and service, and the criminal nature...
Jade walkers.
And I expect you to build for that.
Oh, yeah. They do not hustle across...
No, they don't.
They turn, because they know they're finished.
And just look at you, and just ride on Sascha.
No, he uses the crosswalk.
Is this, is this the one that goes straight down across to our place, that one?
So, I just don't call people who work across the right from McDonald's, they can fight over me, just like we do at shooters. You know, it's like, yes.
Yeah, they're too lazy in the corner to cross.
Yes. Okay, so going back to the Aquatic Center, it sounds like you probably want to look at maybe asking or telling, because there was a lot of discussion on that, and it seems like there is a lot of concern in, rightly so. We need to go ahead and, and get stuff together that will, you know, put people's minds at ease as to how we're going to approach this and, and how things would be run, so, maybe looking at putting together a business plan might be the best way, comparing, I know Bill and I have sat down and looked at, like, what do the other pools have out there? You know, splash parties, pool passes, blah, 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 and how can we do that conjunction with McGill, as far as the maintenance and everything? So, anything else on the Aquatic Center?
When we went down and visited with Eric in Las Vegas, one of the things he said is they're going to assist us with the pool operations, so that a lot of that's going to be covered, is to place the lifeguards and, and...
Right.
What their recommendations are for ages and, and things like that. So Eric's been, for me personally, been really good with it, but they're just not handling us the key and, and, you know, and that's vendors and everything. For purchasing chemical feeders from a certain vendor, they're required to come here and go through the operations and stuff, so hopefully the transition will be pretty smooth for us, for the maintenance and the operations of the, of the pool as well. He's a good type of work for, work with, I should say.
Okay.
And I think that it probably would be a good idea down the road to have another community with some updates.
You could probably spend a whole, one whole meeting just on that.
Cool.
Cause they felt they were cut off.
Right. So you think that's a priority, that people want...
I think the pool is more than that, they want...
Concerns, I think, concerns.
They're not concerned about where we're doing our business so much as the pool and what it's going to cost.
Just that it can stay open.
Yeah. Okay. It'd be nice to have that in conjunction with the ground breaking, but that is coming too soon, we don't have enough time, so. Probably next fall, when construction's underway, I think, what is, construction complete in March, March 1st or something like that, wasn't it?
Mm-hmm.
Maybe in September, maybe we could have another meeting, I really think we should have another meeting, if not, you know, we're bored.
And maybe we could time it in conjunction with the Ely Times Building, and the education offices, or something. From that into planning, moving out some of the next projects, which we need to attend to.
Open house would definitely be nice.
Yeah.
That's right, and, and I've had conversation with these two on doing that, so we just have to be to date.
Okay. Let's see, I think we put the Duck Pond status to rest, we're very confident that the library expansion did not impact the Duck Pond, impact the Michael Clayton Center, I think McGarry's rounded, let's see. And then we had the question about metal sheds and maintenance, oh, I'm sorry.
One thing, I don't know if you're aware of it, just be the part of the bill, that they did come out here and excavate, excuse me, below the Duck Pond, see if there was any subsurface issues.
Right.
It was all, it was all pressed.
Yeah.
So that's another plus for the building.
Right. For the, when did they do that, or they did that?
Can you have that data, because we need to...
Yeah, it was an environmental, not environmental, but you did the soil, yeah, geotechnical thing, yeah.
We should have brought that up, I didn't think about it at the time.
Give us some presentation.
Okay. Well, let me finish that. Okay, anything else on the Duck Pond? Okay, the metal sheds, maintenance, that was, that's something that's on the list back there, and those were, were we thinking those were the metal sheds back up the canyon that they were talking about, or?
Because the ones, the ones, right behind us aren't too bad, but the ones, the ones over on that side look like they belong in a history book, with all the rusted, yeah.
Because they have this, yeah.
They have history.
What do they actually use so far?
We still have a few things in there for storage, but just need to be torn down, honestly.
Yeah, they're ugly.
Yeah, they are, and they're probably, they're probably less than safe and secure.
They're secure.
So, probably, so are they going to come down?
Couldn't they come down at the same time this building comes down, because you're going to be looking at...
Well, can't come down before? Because it's, we've got to, we've got to get our, the assessment back on the, what do you call it, on the Augustus? We've got to get all, everything out of here, so.
You want to see them down.
I like demo stuff, yeah.
Okay, so, so we want to say that they're probably a candidate for demolition, but first we'd have to identify what's being stored in them, and where we could relocate it.
No, we, we actually have a work order to do them, but they're just not there, I mean, we don't have the machinery to demolish them for sure.
So if we had to down, we'd have company...
The road department could down this. You've got, you've got big back, could just come in and, and, it's not that hard.
The wrong, the overhead power line is right, right, wrong, I forgot, I was, and not, not leaders. We've had, we've had, we had some discussion about turning them down, and they said, well, we're going to have to let us know when that happens, because that power line sits right there with the...
Well, if we're having a company, can we demo this building, would it be...
I think so at that point, or not.
Just do it all at once.
Okay, and we can see what the additional cost would be, and then all we need to know is where we're storing the stuff that's already in there, and we've got those gone.
And you said there's not that much that's in there, or is that a relative, not that much?
We have steel, concrete forms, things like that, most of this we've gotten out of it over the years. There's an x-ray machine that I think was addressed to the commissioners 20 years ago, what they were going to do with it.
I think I've heard about that even more recently, and the problem is, is that it actually has some kind of something in it that can't, uranium, that can't just be taken to the dump, so they don't know what to do with it.
Take it to Beatty.
They need to.
Take it to Beatty, if it's got uranium, that's the landfill site.
We can definitely look into what we got.
You know what, the hospital, the hospital...
That should be your responsibility, shouldn't it?
The commission, it's the commissions, it's the commission, but I would contact the hospital to find out how they dispose. They upgrade their equipment all the time, they have to dispose of their old equipment.
So maybe next time they go ahead and dispose of something, they can come by and swing by and pick up the x-ray machine.
So...
It's probably a very...
So that's something that, that the maintenance department needs to ask the hospital or something, how, how they do that.
Yeah.
Cause we do need to get that out of there, start work on getting that done.
Okay, anything else on the metal sheds? Let's see, renovation to the courthouse after the building is complete, okay, that was from Amy Sorenson. Does anybody remember the specifics on that, on renovation to the courthouse after the building is complete? I think she wanted to know how much we were going to change in the first. Oh, that's right, that's right.
Yeah.
Okay.
In that one, you will be limited, because that one is on the...
Yeah, and I was going to say, if I, yeah, I don't think that there's, would be a whole lot other than just the liners and just office, you know, what's already in there, just making sure that it's, you know, I don't see a whole lot happening yet personally.
I don't know how effective inside is, I don't know, because the senior center's on, is that correct?
Right.
And we do things...
But they have to still stay within the time period, whether it's the paint color, signage...
On the interior, the exterior?
Both, both. Cause like, when you go on my doors, not by... Both, so, cause why can't we do those on their doors now, I had to work with historic preservation.
But what it's.
But I mean, what I'm saying is like, on the interior.